I'm going to start the regular portion of the Gold Beach City Council meeting at 6:30 PM. We'll call the meeting de order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go call.
Summer Madison, position one.
Jip Bradley, position two.
Sergio Martinez, position three.
Bebe Skinner, position four.
Valerie McGilvery, position five.
Tammy Conklin, Mayor, and we have staff members Anthony Cavano and Judy Fritz. And the first item on the agenda is Gold Beach Main Street Outreach Committee Coordinator. Ms. Curtis, you have the floor.
Hello, everybody. So Summer talked a little bit last time on this night, able to be here, but we are working on a end-of-the-year report that will go over all of the urban renewables goals and display how all of my position has gone to each of those goals and how I'm meeting those goals. So that is still works, but I did want to give you guys a little bit of an update on our Christmas gift back program. So we raised almost $10,000 to give back to 80 families here in Gold Beach, and those were all local businesses. So we purchased gift cards for all of our local businesses to provide for those families during the holiday season. And I just want to say that it's been wonderful getting out and buying these gift cards and talking to our local businesses, and they are incredibly thankful. And they are just so willing to talk about all their business needs, and it's really been a tremendous joy getting out and talking to all of our Gold Beach businesses and showing us that we support them. And it's been a really great opportunity. In addition, I went to Cape Junction just after the last meeting for a Reinventing Rural Co-Starters Boot Camp. They were amazing, and they're super excited to come and work with us here in Gold Beach. Essentially, what it is, is a small business startup boot camp, and it's anywhere from leather makers to candle makers to businesses who are still already going and just maybe want to expand or grow a little bit. And it's all rural. So like, for example, in Fossil Oregon, they had a group of nine people who came to their co-starters boot camp, and they were shocked that their population of nothing even had nine businesses to start up. But out of that co-starters boot camp, three of the nine started businesses, and we're still in business a year later. So we're really excited to bring that to Gold Beach. We're looking at the end of February, and so I'm trying to find now a couple businesses that will sponsor that and get that going here in Gold Beach. In addition to that, I'm doing some training with them so that I can help facilitate those in the future as well. So that's it. Anybody have some questions? Nope? Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Wait, sorry. Are you watching? What happened this weekend and how did that go?
Oh, at the event center, at the event center this weekend, there was almost 300 people. It was wonderful. Huge, huge event. We did free photos with Santa, and that line was very long, lots of really happy kids. And we also did decorating ornaments during the whole thing to kind of keep the kids busy while they were actually waited in line. So we got to paint ornaments, enjoy some hot chocolate, and pictures with Santa, and it was a really great event. Yeah.
Would it be appropriate for you to share the block by block kind of method of development in rural downtown districts so that maybe they kind of have an idea of what that looks like prior to those actually?
Yeah, so I attended a webinar, it was actually in person, at the Oregon Main Street Conference in Clamath Falls, and it's a really cool concept, similar to our feasibility study that we're getting ready to start, but it goes block by block. And essentially, you look at each block, and you have people come into a workshop, similar to how we did here, and everybody kind of sits down at a table, and they have their block, and they're able to say, you know, it would be nice if we developed something right here, or parking right here would work really good, or... And it's really interactive, and it's block by block. And the person who puts it on is a city planner, and really great guy. I'd be really interested in getting that going myself. It's really interactive and fun, so it makes it easier to digest and really focuses on each block, because not one thing is going to work for everything. The whole block by two aisles is just not before. Yeah?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, is Reverend Stapleton here?
The only person online is Mr. Vier, and I did email the packet to him.
So I think I'm going to push number two and number three towards the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Don't let me forget to come back to it. And the Hoffmanns are here, and would like some time to speak. And I'm going to, we usually only give people three minutes, I'm going to give you five. And I'll remind the council that anything that's regarding personnel matters, we can't discuss. Our attorney recommended that we not mention anything at all about personnel matters, which may be part of what comes up from the Hoffmanns. So please go.
Thank you.
You can just state your name for the record, but you don't want to give your address.
My name is Kathy Hoffman, and thank you for you all being here. I mean that, sitting in those chairs. I've never had the guts. So I wrote it down because I thought I had three minutes, and I have three, four years. So I will read it until I run out of time, I guess. So my name is Kathy Hoffman, and my intention tonight with my husband Dennis is to provide the council with some background information. And I'm hoping that I will follow this up with an email to each of you so that you have more detailed information about what I am referring to tonight. I thought I would have done that. Turns out it's difficult to pull out police records and look at them again. So I wasn't very successful at that, but I will be, and I'm ready to do that. I thought this was a good first step. So that's my intention. Many unanswered questions remain for our family following the conclusion of an Oregon State Police investigation into the disappearance of my brother's handgun while it was in the possession of the Gold Beach Police Department prior to the arrival of Chief White. I will clarify here that he and I believe another officer, at least one officer, may have stepped into this mess after it had already happened. So I don't want to confuse anyone when I make references. Chief White has been very kind, very professional, and has always found time for us. So I don't want any confusion there. My brother, Joe Emrick, was his name, took his own life in the early morning hours of May 20th, 2021, and he used a handgun. That handgun was taken from the scene by at least one Gold Beach Police Officer, apparently. Between late June and early July of 2021 through mid-January of 2022, I made three separate requests to complete the process required to have that handgun destroyed. On the last day of January in 2022, Chief White informed Dennis and I that the handgun was missing from the department. It took a little while to process that information, and he spent a lot of time with us to help us try to do that. He gave us a copy of the police report that had been done that morning. It had some incorrect information, but the most unsettling part about the police report for Dennis and I and our kids was its incompleteness. Significant information was omitted from that police report, as were signatures. The city requested an investigation from Oregon State Police, and a report from them was released sometime in May of 2022. I wouldn't have known that if it happened, but Chief White. Our family has a lot of love for this community, and we trusted that the city would request an investigation that would provide at least some answers and maybe even possibly some accountability for actions taken or even inactions. The investigation the city requested, I found out about a month ago or two when a state police officer... And all of this sounds surreal. I just say the words. It's not. It's not me. Is that five minutes?
It is.
I found a month ago that it was called a public official investigation. That type of investigation is not looking for a gun that has been lost or misplaced or stolen. It is looking at an individual. It never was focused on finding out what may or may not have happened to my brother's gun. And I think that we would hope that when you consider this information and you look at our email, that we'll try hard to make as clear as we can. We are hoping at least one of you may have some questions also, because I can't imagine this happening to another family, and I don't know how to make it not. And I thank you for the extra time. I will always thank Chief White for his time and for you all listening to this unpleasant topic. I thank you.
Thank you. Really sorry for what happened to your brother.
Thank you.
And then everything that happened since then. And if you email me, I'll make sure everybody gets it. I promise. Thank you.
And just, I know the Hoffmanns know, but I just wanted to set for the record that the officer that responded that evening is no longer with us. And while we can't really talk about personnel matters, it was partially related to that incident. So I just want the council to know that the situation has been dealt with personnel-wise as best as we were able. And as Ms. Hoffman said, unfortunately, Chief White kind of came into a big hairball. And as soon as he realized that something was wrong, he immediately did everything he could to try to not make it right, that's not the right word, but try to correct the deficiencies. But yes, we hope that it never happens again either way.
All right. Citizen request items, is there anybody online that wanted to speak? I think you both have text capabilities, so if you just want to put a text in if you want to say something.
And so far, no one else has joined the meeting.
Okay, so then what I will do is open the public hearing section for ordinance number 684.
Did you want to, did you want to go back to number two, or do you want to go back to that later?
I think number two makes more sense when we get down towards the bottom. We're talking about the other stuff.
Okay, I actually, when I was doing the agenda, I was wondering if you wanted me to put 11 with that, but that sounds good, that when you're discussing number 11.
It seemed to make more sense to me, so if you don't mind. And then maybe Reverend Stapleton will show up, and we can talk about this item when he's here.
And I just, I just realized when we were doing the pledge that I don't think I emailed our student liaison.
Oops. I don't think you did. Yeah. I told him that there was a meeting.
But still, I should have emailed him directly, and I just realized that I did not. So I will make sure that...
I don't disagree.
I have an email list for the council packets, and yeah, so I will make sure he gets the packet next time.
Okay, I saw him today.
Tell him I'm sorry. That was my fault.
It's, sure, it's fine, but I just, he is still motivating me.
Okay, good. Good.
So ordinance 684 is a utility code. And I'll let the administrator introduce it, then I'll open the public hearing officially.
Okay, let me get there.
Actually, I'm going to open the public hearing first. That way we at least have a minute. I'll open it at 6:45.
Okay, and the reason, the reason why we have to have a public hearing is that we are amending ordinance, so that requires a public hearing. So folks in the audience, if you want to participate in this public hearing about our sewer code, you're more than welcome. Exciting topic. This came about from the appeal that we had the past two meetings, that there were some ambiguities in our code, and so the attorney and I felt like we needed to, while it was fresh in our minds, we needed to button that situation up. So the recommendations that had been contained in his information, which I also included in the packet, he put together a fix-it for the issues that we had related to the sewer code.
Do you have to know what page that is for?
It starts on page 83. And the ordinance itself is on page 86. And we're changing one of the definitions and removing one section of the code. And that was, again, based on legal counsel's advice. And Mr. Williamson, Ross, was the one that wrote the ordinance.
Where does the definition change?
For equivalent residential unit, it's on page 87. Strikeout shows the text to be deleted. So basically, it's just taking out that...
To change the definition there. So one change to make happen.
There's subsection 20, which I think also is a definition that's just being removed. And then the section 3.440, that has to do with that maintenance rate. You know, you can turn it off for six months, but he was saying, yeah, that works for water, but that doesn't obviously work for sewer. You can't turn your sewer off, so.
Okay, since we're in public hearing, does anybody in the public have any comments on the ordinance proposal? See anybody in the audience? I don't see anybody online. Okay, then I will close the public hearing at 6:48. And we will go to council questions, and we will start with Counsel Bradley. And we'll go to Counsel Martinez. I have no questions at this time. Counsel Skinner.
No further questions.
Counsel McGilvery.
You have questions?
Counsel Madison.
Is there, is there any leaning for one meeting or two-meeting adoption? Is there a reason why we would want to wait for two?
Typically, if it's not like an emergency, we say we want to, but this one is so small, I don't know that we need to have two readings of it. That's up to you guys. I mean, two separate readings of it.
And it's mostly clarification. It's not really changing anything, right?
Correct. We're not adding new. Yeah.
So what do you prefer?
That's up to the council. I'll just, we'll make a motion if they're ready to move on.
Make a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that council adopt ordinance number 684, ordinance amending sections 3.410 and 3.440 of the Gold Beach Sewer Code, which was adopted as part of the Gold Beach Utility Code.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? And it's supposed to do it in both and one, right?
Well, you have to, that needs to be a separate motion. That's why I said, like, if you want to adopt it in one meeting, we need a motion that says, a motion that the council adopt ordinance 684 with both readings this evening. So if that is unanimous, then we can, then we can go on to... And it's perfectly fine what Counsel Madison did. It would just be a one, it would be a two-meeting adoption. But if you want to do it in one meeting tonight, I need to have that motion approved unanimously, because everybody has to agree to both readings at one night.
So I will make a motion that council consider both readings adopted this evening for ordinance number 647.
684. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the previous motion is on pause, and this is the current motion. To make sure we have it correctly, Administrator, would you mind reading it back?
The motion that the council adopt ordinance number 684, both readings tonight.
Okay. And is there any discussion? And I'll call a question. Counsel Bradley?
Aye.
Counsel Martinez?
Aye.
Counsel Skinner?
Aye.
Counsel McGilvery?
Aye.
Counsel Madison?
Aye.
Okay, so that passed unanimously.
So then, if you could amend your motion to have both readings by title only tonight.
Previous motion.
That's a lot.
Are you open to amending the motion?
Sure. So I make a motion to amend my original motion that we do both readings this evening in adopting ordinance 684, ordinance amending sections 3.410 and 3.440 of the Gold Beach Sewer Code, which was adopted as part of the Gold Beach Utility Code.
By title only.
By title only.
You seconded, no, you seconded.
Yes.
Are you okay with the amendment as a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then just real quickly for, like, if you notice, it says ordinance number, and I put XX, because I didn't, when I was working from home, I didn't have ordinances passed 2012, and so I didn't know the number. So that, the number that I'm going to plug in when I read it by title only is 631. So after you vote on it, then I will read them both into the record.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, then I will call a question. Counsel Bradley?
Aye.
Counsel Martinez?
Aye.
Counsel Skinner?
Aye.
Counsel McGilvery?
Aye.
Counsel Madison?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, and then hang on for just a moment, because this is incredibly boring, but I have to do it. Okay, ordinance number 684 and ordinance amending sections 3.410 and 3.440 of the Gold Beach Sewer Code, which was adopted as part of the Gold Beach Utility Code, ordinance number 631, and ordinance number 647, first reading. Ordinance number 684 and ordinance amending sections 3.410 and 3.440 of the Gold Beach Sewer Code, which was adopted as part of the Gold Beach Utility Code, ordinance number 631 and ordinance number 647, second reading. And then that will go into effect 30 days from today.
In the block, do I put 5-0 in the second reading as well, or just...
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Keeping done? On to the next one. Okay, resolution R2223-06, annual water and sewer rate adjustment. That does not need to be a public hearing, correct?
It actually does. The things that are under...
Only is our public, okay.
Yeah, because it's a rate.
Okay, so open the public hearing at 6:53 PM. Administrator, please introduce the resolution.
This is our annual rate adjustment, and since we have several new counselors, I thought I would just give you a little more background than I normally do. We went through Water Master Plan and Capital Improvement Plan that was adopted in 2016. Actually, some of the work that's being done, actually, all the work that's being done right now, the water treatment plant project and the work that we did on the water main earlier this year, those were all projects that were identified in that plan. So after we did the Water Master Plan, we went through a rate study that was conducted by RCAC, which Rural Community, what is the rest of it?
Assistance Corporation.
Thank you. And basically, using the plan, using the Capital Improvement Plan as the basis, they figured out how much money we needed to charge for rates in order to pay for the debt of what we would be doing in the future. And so every year, usually in July, but the last couple of elections, we've waited until after the election to have the rate increase. It's just, it's to keep pace with inflation and to make sure that we're staying on track with the rate study that was done. And so we use the cost factor that's based on, it's called the Municipal Cost Index, which is a little bit different than the CPI, because it's specific to government, because we have, costs to us are a little bit different than they are to private industry. And so they're related but different. So this one was a little bit different, since we had a year and a half since our last rate increase. So what I did was I went through the time period of June 2021 to June of 2022, and the MCI had a 12.23% increase. Basically, that's inflation, okay? For October, which is the most current that they have for this year, I went from October of 2021 to October of 2022. That block, one-year block, was an 8%. And then if you average the two together, it came out to a little over 10%. So what staff is proposing is we go with the 10%. If we went with what it should have been from the last look at, it would be 12%. So I'm trying to kind of split the difference there, so it's not such a huge increase, but could be more, for sure. And basically, this has to do with the cost of producing, drawing and producing the water and conveying it. So on page 89, that shows what the CPI, the MCI change, and then also how the current, how it stacks up against the current rate, and then the proposed rate, which if adopted, would go into effect for the January billing. So the mayor and I had a couple of emails back and forth today talking about the rate structure. And it's not shown in here, but if you look at the resolution, which is on page... Sorry. The resolution, which is on page 96, that our water rates are tiered. So you have a base rate, which is just what I put in the report, but then there's four different tiers of water. So the base rate gets you your first 1,500 gallons. And then there's a different rate for 1,500, 1 to 5,000, 5,001 to 15,000, and then anything over 15,000. And the mayor was questioning, like, maybe there wasn't enough increase on some of the lower tiers, but that was what the rate study had come up with in 2016. So I think without actually having another rate study, we probably shouldn't question that. But basically, the more water you use, the more it will cost you per gallon, and that is to encourage water conservation. So, because it used to be, before we had the water rate study, the more water you use, the less it cost. So there was no incentive to not leave your hose running, but there's now incentive to do that. So all of those, those base rates will go up by the amounts that are listed there. And I hope that I explained that good enough.
Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on the rates, the modern sewer rate resolution? I am seeing none, so we will close the public hearing at 6:58 PM. And we will start council discussion, starting with Counsel Bradley.
I need to have a think.
We'll move on to Counsel Martinez and come back.
I don't have any comments right now.
Counsel Skinner.
I was looking at this and thinking of the cost that we had changing and maintaining the water plants and the cost increases from what was proposed, and it made sense, and it seems necessary. I was also looking at the table on the top of page 89, and I was looking at the October 1 being 8% change from October to October, the June to June being the 12, and then the average at the 10. I don't know if it would seem better to people if we made it... I don't know if it would seem better to people if we made it 19. I don't know if it would really make a difference or not. But it's just a little bit. If you look at the rate proposed change, it's $2 and something a month, $30, but it might make a difference. The other question I had was the, on the charts or the tables, I wasn't catching in the actual resolution the $1 base increase, rather the reserve rate?
Water reserve, yes.
So I saw that in the narrative.
It's on the, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, it's in the fifth, whereas it's.
Page 94, yeah.
Yeah, it's the last one, and a $1 per account increase to the water reserve rate. And that's debt service. Currently, the water reserve is $7 per account. So then if, if the resolution were adopted, it would be $8 per account.
Would it have reflected on that table?
Correct. The, if I remember, I will have to double check, but if I remember off the top of my head, according to the rate study, we needed to get to $10 per account and we did it incrementally to cover the cost of the debt service projected. And of course, that was pre-COVID.
So it was a planned production, that dollar increase?
Yes.
And then how often are the rate studies done? The last one you said was 2016?
Um, that actually was the first one the city ever did.
Oh.
That I'm aware of. And that was kind of the reason for doing it was when we adopted that master plan, it's like, okay, do our rates reflect what we need? Because when you go to the lenders, for this particular one, it's Business Oregon, IFA, they basically treat us like, like if you're going to buy a car. Do you have enough, are you making enough money at your job to pay back this debt? And so we have to provide them with that water master plan, with the rate study, so that we can assure our lenders that we have enough customers, that we're collecting enough on that reserve rate to cover the debt that they have given us.
Thank you.
Right, the first sewer study was a sewer study and that was around 10 or 11. Administrator Jones was here and they had to use that old software.
Correct.
So when we did our water rate study, they were going to use Casell, which was much easier.
Because the, the RCAC folks wanted, we didn't have a whole lot of, our old water program didn't have a whole lot of ways that you could extract information out of it, like how much customers were using over a certain amount of time, where that's what they really wanted to look at. So we had to have, we converted to that program in 2011 and they wanted at least three years of utility customer records before they felt comfortable doing the rate study. So they started it in 2015 and it took about six months for them to complete it and then we had several hearings about it before we adopted it.
I feel we've talked about this before, but just to put on the record, if somebody's experiencing hardship and this rate increase would affect their ability to make the payment, the city has, or Orca has ways to help people who aren't able to make that base?
I want to say we have something with Orca, yeah.
With Orca, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can help connect people to resources? Thank you, I'm done.
Counselor McGilvery?
No, I, Counselor Skinner solved my issue with your.
She's good for that.
Yes, she is. So no, I agree with you.
Counselor Madison?
So the recommendations from MCI come out annually?
Well, the, the cost inflation index, they, they come out monthly, actually. And then, and then whenever we do our, when we look at the rates, I take it the year to year. So the last rate increase we had was in June of 2021 and that actually had been the first one. We didn't do a rate increase in 2020 because of COVID. So then if we, if we had done it in July like we normally do, we would be, we would be looking at June 21 to June 22, so that's where the, the 12.23 was coming up. But since we have waited like almost six months.
And we're still playing catch-up, right?
Correct. Yeah, because we have six months of not collecting.
And I, I think that was a, a nice break to offer, but with inflation and recession on the rise right now, are we, should we maybe consider what is the best option? Should we look at maybe, should we reach out to the community and ask them what they think? Only because I'd rather pay more now than in a year when I don't have as much flex, when I'm not dealing with just a 40% inflation, but 60. I'd rather, I'd rather buy the bullet now.
I would, I would say don't necessarily reach out because I, I can tell you just from other cities where it's, nobody wants a rate increase, so they're going to say no.
I respect it, I really do.
But if, the reason why I did the 10% was I was trying to split, split the difference, but you both have, have good points. If we want to do it 9% or 8%, which we did October to October, I would need to refigure it, so we'd have to bring it back next month because I, I can't do that tonight on the fly, I'm sorry.
Right, so that'd be another month of not collecting. You wanted to be able to start till February?
Well, no, we could still make the, because the bills go out at the end and I'm proposing, because I don't like to do anything in December. So the, the rates, the 10% increase I was proposing would be to go into effect for the January bill, which would be at the end of January. So if you want me to give you the 8% and 9% figures for the January meeting, it would still have time to go into effect for the January billing.
I support the 10% because looking at what materials and everything to keep our water system going and how even the cost of that itself has gone up, the rates for loans and things, like, we are government, so we get a little bit of the way that is still probably more financially responsible to take the 10. But I'm also very curious about, also with the reason, but given it's usually the one that I look to reference to these little bit-by-bit differences.
It is kind of, I do have some feelings about that because I am concerned about our rates of inflation and, um, you know, I know that there's supposed to be this huge income increase for people of, um, fixed income, but it's not that darn huge and with everything else going up along with it, it gets eaten up very quickly. And, um, you know, the adage, just because I can doesn't mean I should. And maybe this is poor timing based on our current economic, national economic, international economic situation. Perhaps, perhaps 10% is a little... I just wish we didn't have to raise it at all, but if we must, I'm wondering if it can be a little less. And do we have to continue to, to raise the, the water reserve?
We have to, we have to get it up to the $10 and that's what the debt service was in 2016, which that has all changed now. We had to just go back to IFA and ask for another $1.5 million on top of the $5 million that we had already borrowed. And that was strictly because of inflation. The cost of everything went up, so we had to ask for more money.
Right.
The, so that $10 that they said to get to in, we figured it would take us, I think, eight years to get to there because it was adopted in 2016 to get to the $10. We started it at, I want to say $4? We started at $4? Because you were there. I want to say we started it at $4 and then it's been increasing by $1. But, and, and I totally, I am not in any way minimizing what you're saying. I totally get it. It's hard, but I, everything costs more for the city too. And it's, it's like if we don't keep up with the, the changes, the reason why we decided to do it annually is this is actually the biggest jump it's ever taken. Usually it's around 2% to 4%, but we all know that inflation has gone up in the last year. So had we done this in July, when we typically do it, it would have been 12%. So, so it's actually a little bit less because we did wait a little while. However, the six months that we waited, the cost of inflation, so like the cost of chlorine, the cost of transportation, all of that has gone up and I can tell you that the 10% does not keep up with the cost of, of what everything costs us. So it, and, you know, it's up to you guys, but if we don't keep up with inflation, then what happens is that, like a lot of cities do, they don't want to make difficult decisions and then like six or eight years down the road, then a big, a big, big, big jump has to be made and then that really hurts. So.
So when, now, we did this, this study in 2016, when is the next study due? When do we do that again? Because we're looking at a different, we are looking at an increased population base.
And they factor that in. That, that, I should give you guys, everybody had it before, but I should give you a copy of the study. That's all factored in. They factor in, like, in, they, they say that our population's going to grow by this much, we should add this many accounts annually, and so all of that is factored into it. I don't know what the usual timeline is on rate studies, but I would say 10 years, probably, just to make sure that we're keeping up. And, and I just know from experience on other ones that it's never going to be less. They'll come back and say, you're not, you're not collecting enough to keep up with inflation and so you should be charging more. So, but I would say probably a rate study is good for 10 years.
Okay, I want to take the floor back for a second then I will put Counselor Madison. So when I first started on the city council, I worked with Administrator Curtis and his argument was, and he was very frugal, along with Sherwood Walker, but he said if you don't do regular increases, then you have to do huge increases and then everybody's really angry. So if you do a $2 increase today, people are like, but if you do a $20 increase, four years from now, they're like, you guys suck. And so it, it's, it, it makes more sense to keep doing it. The other thing that I don't, we've mentioned tonight is that we're trying to find a public works superintendent and we're finding that our wage is much lower than what people are expecting. Is that correct? And so that's the other thing, is that as we have turnover, our, our labor costs are going up and of course, base labor costs go up anyway, along with everything else. So we have to kind of, the important thing is that we always have water to turn on and sewer to get rid of and that's our job, is to make sure that that happens and that we can afford it. And when the first rate study came out, we didn't implement the whole amount because we thought it was too much all at once. So that's why it's been slowly been implemented. And then we'll go to Counselor Madison and then I want to ask the council a question.
I know I've mentioned it before, but I'm pretty proud of the, of the new public works that we have here at the city and, I mean, from clearing stormwater off the roads to the reports that we give back with our drinking water and that's because we have some people that take that very serious. And I look at the $44 million project that Port Hurst is undertaking right now because they were negligent and I, I would much rather look at this increase versus a bond for $44 million on the backs of 2,000 people.
You're right.
Okay, Kiall, so I have a question. So we closed the public hearing and Mr. Viera has raised his hand online. Do you want me to reopen the public hearing and take his input? Or move on?
No.
Okay, we're going to move on. So does anybody want to make a motion or do we want to continue to discuss?
And like I said, I would be happy to bring back 8 and 9 next month because it's not going to go into effect till, but, okay.
My only question is on, we've talked about, or with the other huge topics we have on the board about the city and social service things. Does the city have a way to maybe share the resources Orca has as more families might be needing to reach out to Orca? Is that something we could include in a water rule statement? Because maybe it's not for the family that opened it, maybe it's for someone they know. I don't know if that's something we could do to help, but something that we talk about in the future.
What, like push out that information?
Yeah.
It's, it's a tough issue because Orca's not cutting checks right now because they don't have any money, but yet the state's requiring them to advertise the program. So it's, it's not the best program and as far as I know, we only have one person that's applied. They've been approved and Orca hasn't written the check and they promised it several months ago, so.
So not moving it now?
The chair of Orca got an email from the city of Gold Beach. Also happens to be the mayor. But it's, I don't know, but they are working on it. It's just, it's not a perfect situation. So I, I wouldn't recommend that we overly advertise it. It's my understanding there's a half a dozen people that either can't afford their bill or choose not to pay it and they get talked to on a regular basis. And our staff can confirm that, but it's, it's not a huge number.
Well, I make the motion that the council adopt a resolution R2223-06, a resolution setting water and sewer rates and implementing an annual inflation adjustment rate and repealing resolution R2021-25 and any other resolutions that may be in conflict.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Skinner to pass the resolution and a second from Counselor Martinez. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. Counselor Bradley? I'll call a question.
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Skinner?
Aye.
Counselor McGilvery?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. All right, the next one is the annual review of the residential STR permitted, possibly, of search for rentals permitted, possibly adopting resolution R2223-07. And I will open the public hearing at 7:16. And Administrator, will you introduce me to the paper?
Yes, this will be page 98. Okay, now, these, this, the only reason why I'm bringing this back to you, we don't look at the city fee structure. This is not the water and sewer rates. This is like things we charge for like need searches or public works time if they have to go do something or fire time or whatever. Those are just their administrative, we look at those usually, we try to look at them in the summer, but sometimes it's every other year. We're not actually looking at any of the rates. It's just the, the new short-term rental endorsement that we adopted in 2021 put a cap on the number of residential STRs that would be approved for each year. Now, when I say residential, I mean ones that are located in the residential zone. The one in the commercial zones, the, the council is trying to encourage the vacation rentals in the commercial zone. And so when we first adopted this last year, we just took the number of operating residential STRs and that's where the 21 came from. So what staff is recommending is that, I went through to see how many endorsements that we have right now and this is on page 99 under the notes. So we have a total of 38 STR endorsements that are located within the commercial zone and you can see from year 2020 to 2021 how dramatically that has increased. So, I mean, we have lots of vacation rentals in the commercial zone, which is fine. That's, that's where we want them to be. But the 38 is almost as many as we had altogether for residential and commercial in 2020 and there were even fewer before then. It's just, those are the numbers that I have from the previous report, so that's why I use them. The Kerber Drive development that just got finished last year, all of those are vacation rentals, which we knew and again, but it was fine. That was how the, the place was set up. Same with Sebastian Shore. So there's 25 in Sebastian Shore. So we have a lot of them already. We're not, we're not hurting for vacation rentals. So as of this report in November, we have 17 of that 21 that were approved in 2020, in 2021. There's two more, I believe, that are, yeah, there's two more that are still in the permitting process and then we still, we have three violators that we are putting them through the process. So there's potentially five more there anyway. What staff, staff's recommendation is in order to encourage them to keep going to the commercial zones is that we reduce that, that number for this year to 15 and that's still four more than what we had in 2020. But the idea of keeping them out of the residential zones was that we need those houses for long-term rentals and we still need those houses for long-term rentals. So, but that decision is up to you guys to make. That's just staff is recommending that we reduce it from 21 to 15 for the residential zone. Again, unlimited. that we reduce it from 21 to 15 for the residential zone. Again, unlimited for commercial.
Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on the short-term rentals? Hearing done. We will close the public hearing at 7:20 PM. We're going to start with Counsel Bradley. He loves being on the hot seat.
I'm still debating. I mean, I know the Kerber Drive basically replaced the motel. Does everyone agree on that? Would it make sense if that would be a vacation rental? Because that is, seems to be, people are more wanting to stay on vacation rentals instead of the motel. Need to move on to Mr. Martinez.
And I would just, just remind everyone that if you want to leave it at 21, then we don't need to do anything. There, there's no motion that's needed. It just stays, the ordinance, the resolution has it at 21.
Counsel Martinez?
I'm inclined to agree with this move. It is highly attractive for a property owner to own a short-term rental as opposed to a long-term rental. I don't know if I need to explain those, that, the source of that attraction. But people need a place to live. And I think this is a, a good move to make to fight on the side of people that are looking for a long-term place to live. Because, well, like we've been saying, it's been a big topic for this, for this council is to make houses more affordable. If it just becomes another commodity entirely, then, then I think we're losing sight of what a house is meant to be. A place for people to live and hopefully contribute to our community in meaningful ways. I'm not sure what else to say. That's just where my thoughts are taking me right now.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Skinner?
I think it's a good idea, and it was my understanding as the business councilor that that was the intended goal, that as we changed the business code, that the goal was to move businesses into the business district, or business zone. Commercial zone, there we go. But I am a little bit unclear on the process. So if right now we have 17 in residential, we have two more applying and three more who might become non-violators, how does that come? Is it's first come, first served, so July, they just, whoever gets, we just put out notice? A reminder or a post-notice?
Yeah, each year before, well, you have to get a business license each year. It's renewed each year, but the endorsement also has to be renewed each year for the short-term rental endorsement. And basically, we contact, the front office contacts everybody that's got a business license, and not just short-term rentals, but everyone that has a business license gets a renewal each year. But we would tell those people, and they all got copies of this ordinance last year, and we explained in, in great detail, lots of wailing and gnashing of teeth, that, you know, the reason for this, and, and to, to kind of speak to what Mr. Martinez just said, that there is this fallacy that you're going to make scads of money if you have a short-term rental because people see like this get-rich-quick stuff. And it's, and the reality is, unless you're in Sebastian Shores, and now the Kerber Drive one have been consistent, even though they're not oceanfront. But if you're not an oceanfront vacation rental, they don't perform as well. And so people think that they're just going to buy a house, like, let's say on Hound Dog, because there's a couple up there, and then they're going to make scads of money on it rather than have a regular vacation rental. But the occupancy is just not there. That unless it's oceanfront, they, they don't get rented as much. So in the long run, they don't make that much money. Yeah, in the summer, it's a lot, but in the off-season, it's not. And pretty much when the boats quit running, that's when the houses quit being rented. So then they sit there vacant, and we have people that need housing. So, so unless it's oceanfront, it really doesn't. And if it's oceanfront, it's already zone commercial. So it's already in the business district. But, so when they get notified of it's time to renew their endorsement, we remind them it's first come, first served. And however many it is, whether it's the 21, or you want to set it at a different, I'm just throwing 15 out there. If you guys want to set it at a different number, that's fine. But they get notified, and it's like, you need to hurry up and get your renewal in because if you don't, you're not, you're not going to, you're not going to be able to legally operate. And already, the vacation rentals are a nightmare. That's why we sent it to the Department of Revenue to collect because they're just, the money that we make on them versus the time that's spent trying to collect. It's just, it used to be we dealt with local operators, so we knew who we were dealing with. But with the advent of Airbnb, and I could say Vicasa is the only, so like, if you travel, go with Vicasa. They're the only ones that, that comply. But all the other ones are just nightmares to deal with. And it, and it frustrates me because these are people that are not contributing to our community. They, they are some nameless, faceless corporation. I don't even know if they're in America. I think Airbnb is based out of Paris. And they're just horrible to deal with.
So lowering it to 15 would also open up staff time from having to deal with less, maybe?
Well, move into the Department of Revenue collection, that, yeah. That officially went into effect in October. So. And the Department of Revenue says that they also have problems dealing with Airbnb. But as our attorney advised us, the state of Oregon has a lot more teeth than we do. So.
Anything else, Counsel Skinner?
I guess my only hesitation would be jumping from 21 to 15. I would consider a number in between, if other counselors wanted to consider that.
I thought it was 17.
Well, that's how many are legally operating right now. The cap on the residential is 21 currently. And like I said, in 2020, which I have data going back further if we need it, but in 2020, we only had 11. So the 21 was already almost twice what, what we had two years previous.
Counsel McGilvery?
So, and those buildings that are now being used for short-term rentals, since they didn't qualify anymore as a short-term rental because they didn't come in within the timeframe of first come, first served, what do they do with that building?
Well, they should be renting them as long-term rentals. That was the idea.
They should be. Okay, should and could and would. What are they doing with those, those buildings? Do we know?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, right now, they think they're going to get rich quick, and then that the houses just sit there vacant.
The house just sits vacant?
Yeah.
And is that what they'll do with them if we reduce this to, say, 15?
I think that if they're forced to, and, and I, I honestly have no sympathy for these people because typically they're out of town, and usually out-of-state owners. These are two and three homes.
Regardless of, you know, where they are.
Right, but they're already not in our community. So then they're taking houses that were either owned by somebody here or people rented here. And now that house is completely out of the rental pool because they think they're going to get rich on Airbnb. Because they watched a video on TikTok that says that's how you can make your money. And so it's just infuriating that we have houses sitting vacant when we have people locally that need homes.
And so that takes me back to my question. What's happening to those buildings if they are not being used as a short-term rental? Are they just sitting vacant? And would they be sitting vacant year after year?
I think that.
If they didn't, you know, if they didn't come in within, if we said 15, and they didn't get their, their application in in time, would the building sit there empty for a year?
If I were a home, if I were a homeowner, a second homeowner, I would want to make money on my house one way or the other.
I'm just wondering if it's, if there's any incentive then to create it as a long-term rental?
Well, but if you're not renting it as a short-term rental.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying. Like, you're not making any money on it now, so why wouldn't you want to turn it into a regular rental and at least make some money on it?
That's my question. Why wouldn't you? Well.
So I, I think what you're going to see, because we're heading into a recession, there's a lot of indicators that say we're already there. And what happened in the last recession is people weren't making enough money with the short-term rentals, so they converted them to long-term rentals. And then they went into foreclosure, and they held on to them as long as they could, and some kept them, and most of them lost them. So it depends on how much they gambled, whether or not, what they're going to do with it. What it does do when we put a cap on it is it prevents people from buying them for that purpose.
Exactly.
And so that's, that's the key that I've found, because people have called me and said, hey, I'm buying this. I want to use it for short-term rental, but there's this city law. And I said, the law's not changing, so if you, if there's no permits available, if you can't leave it empty or rent it long-term, I wouldn't recommend you do that. Because that's, that's the, you're trying to reduce the number of sales for that purpose. And then there's been a couple newspaper articles, and I think there might have been one video, where people got sold on the short-term rental idea, and they're, they found out that they're losing money hand over fist because it wasn't the big promise. And there was even a, a trend for you to do a long-term lease, and then suddenly say this is a short-term rental. And they were doing a lot of illegal ones that way, and that didn't work either. So the get-rich-quick just doesn't work.
No, it doesn't. Of course it doesn't.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I, that was just my, my question is what happens. I, since we have an increase in short-term rentals in commercial property, I'm, I'm quite in favor of going back down, dropping, dropping the rate, the number of them in residential areas. No point in doing that.
Because there is the, the, you know, there is the, the give and take of, okay, yes, they are a needed section of tourist housing. They are. I mean, vacation rentals are. But we have a whole lot in areas where we want them.
Right.
So, so it's not like we're, we're being short-term rental.
We're not trying to shut our.
Yeah, we're not trying to shut them down. We're just trying to push them into places where they're more appropriate.
Right.
Can I ask, Counsel finish their conversation, please?
Yes, sorry.
Counsel Madison?
You know, I think that when the commercial zoning was established, they probably didn't realize we'd be faced with this kind of situation. So let's keep that in mind. And I, I, I'm the administrator for the county transit logic. So I know how much revenue the potential is there to receive. I also know that Gold Beach brings in more than any other city in the county. So I appreciate that the morals trump money. I really do. I would very much appreciate that. And you look at some of the trends happening right now with the working board where they're choosing to live, in addition to some of those articles that are out there right now saying, hey, if you want to get out of the, the whole climate change thing, you should go to Curry County. So I, I think it's a great idea to drop it down to 15. Because what I'm seeing too is that, is that when somebody does buy a, a property or a home, and they say, I'm sorry, a long-term resident, we're going to do a bunch of renovations, and you'll have to find some walls to live. And it ends up being a, a short-term rental. And that really doesn't serve anybody in our community. But also with the trends that we see, with, when somebody says, okay, it's no longer a short-term rental, or I'm not making the, the income that I thought I would, what you'll see is they'll look at the districts, and they'll say, hey, look, we're not going to do short-term rentals anymore. So, you know, maybe a turnover every 90 days with traveling nurses and such. And it slowly progresses back to the service we would hope that it would. You know, maybe the, the hospital makes an agreement to just welcome them outright. And Mayor, weren't you in a similar situation with that at one point, David? With that? So anyways, but that's kind of the trend. Is it kind of comes back to something a little more realistic. And maybe with the recession, we have an opportunity to think ahead in if we do have homes that are, you know, in a situation for, for closure, how can we route those? And how can we make sure that we don't leave them so vulnerable? Anyways, I do support dropping it down to 15.
Okay, thank you very much. My only comment is more in practice, not necessarily what the resolution says, is that if we tell people in June that they can't rent in July and August, they probably already got the book. And I don't want our customer experience, our visitor experience to be negative. So I think in practice, we need to make sure if there's reservations booked for those two really busy months where you're not going to be able to move them somewhere else to make sure we don't ruin that visitor experience, which I don't think staff will be able to.
I think the plan, the plan for me was that if you guys agreed, and, and we, we passed the resolution tonight, then I was going to notify all of the residential ones and say, okay, the council, we decided that for the next fiscal year, it's going to be 15. So when you get your, your renewal, you need to chop chop, if that's what you want to do. And the other thing too is that they're supposed to show that there's a section in there about what, what the rental income has been for the, for the prior, for the prior year. So they can't be just holding it. You have to show that, yes, it's actually being utilized as a short-term rental, and it's generating revenue.
Okay, is there a motion on the board?
I make the motion.
Let me see which page. Okay, the sample motion is on page 100.
I make the motion that the council adopt Resolution R 2223-07, a resolution setting fee schedules for city services, and repealing Resolution R 2122-05, and any other resolutions that may be in conflict.
Is there a second?
Also.
Seconded by Counsel Madison. Any discussion? Call the question, Counsel Bradley.
Aye.
Counsel Martinez.
Aye.
Counsel Skinner.
Aye.
Counsel McGilvery. Counsel Madison.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes four to one. It's the night for changing rules. Okay, second reading of ordinance number 683. Can we do a little happy dance on this one? Okay, we will open the public hearing at 7:37 PM.
Okay, wait, wait. This one is not a, this one doesn't need a public hearing, but.
It's a resolution. I mean, it's an ordinance. But you're right, it's not in the public hearing section.
Right, because we, the public hearing portion, this is just the second reading.
Why does the second resolution and third resolution not require a public hearing?
Because it was already passed last month. You guys passed it. It just has to have the second reading.
That's right.
But eight and nine are also resolutions, so they're not in the public hearing section, right?
Right, because it's not adopting a fee or changing an ordinance.
Thank you. Go get me educated by the end of the year.
Yeah, the public hearing is required if we are adopting an ordinance or if we're adopting a fee.
Okay, so we won't be beating on the public hearing on this. So for those of you that are not familiar, this is the Housing Action Plan we have been working on all year. This is the second reading of ordinance 683. And is there any discussion on the council before we make a motion? I think so. Okay, is there a motion?
I approve that the city council approved the second reading of ordinance number 683, and ordinance adopting a revised land use code, and repealing and replacing ordinance number 634 by title only.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
A motion was made by Counsel McGilvery and seconded by Counsel Bradley. Any discussion? I'll call the question, Counsel Bradley.
Aye.
Counsel Martinez.
Aye.
Counsel Skinner.
Aye.
Counsel McGilvery.
Aye.
Counsel Madison.
Aye.
Okay, so again, boring. Ordinance number 683, an ordinance adopting a revised land use zoning code and repealing and replacing ordinance number 634, second reading. This will go into effect in 30 days.
Passed five to zero. And congratulations, that was a lot of work. Okay, Resolution R 22, 23-4, oh, this is a terrible. Okay, Resolution R 22, 23-4, oh, this is a terrible one. This is a resolution adopting the county multi-jurisdictional natural hazards mitigation plan. I've never liked these. Administrator Fritz.
Okay, so this is, this is something that we are required to adopt. I did not write this resolution. It was written for us. We're required to adopt this, FEMA, we have to do flood damage prevention ordinances and then also natural hazards mitigation planning. The county is actually the one that they deal with and the three cities are what they call annexes under the plan of the county. We don't really, I mean, we, we have to participate in the process, but it's not kind of negotiable. FEMA requires that we adopt it if we want to continue to receive pre or post-disaster federal dollars. So Chief White, bless his heart, because I don't like dealing with these, because they're hideously boring, was the one that attended the meetings on behalf of the city. So if you have any specific questions about the plan process, Chief White will be the one to ask because I did not attend them.
Took one for the team.
It was, it was a hit.
It's one of those deals where we really don't have a lot of choice. We, we have to accept it whether we like it or not. And I never liked those kind of.
It doesn't obligate us to anything.
Correct. And that's the biggest point in this, is it doesn't obligate us to do anything. But if we want to do anything with those available federal funds, should they come up, it must be included in the plan. So we try to come up with a pretty blanket, overall encompassing plan that works for all jurisdictions in the entire county. So if some special fund comes available, we have a project that we can utilize.
Very optimistic approach, I appreciate. Okay, do we have any conversation before we make a motion?
I just have one after. Am I going to give?
Okay.
Page number 120? Is that a helpful page number? DLCD.
Department of Land Conservation and Development.
You.
That's why.
That's why?
Yeah, why.
That's just, I sneezed.
Big of way.
Thank you.
You met ways, so that'll help.
I'm not, it will help me in my time here, you know.
And the reason why DLCD was the, the point agency is that it goes FEMA, state, and then the state decides who is the FEMA agent, so to speak, for the state. And for us, that's the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So they're the, the emergency, not arm, because there's the OEM, but just as it relates to FEMA stuff, the DLCD is the one. And when we did our flood ordinance, they also were the ones that did the requirement on that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief White.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Okay, here we go. I approve that the council adopt R 2223-04, a resolution adopting the city of Gold Beach portion of the Curry County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Counsel McGilbury and seconded by Counsel Madison. I will call the question. Oh, no, I stopped. I was for discussion. And I see them, so I'll call the question. Counsel Bradley.
Aye.
Counsel Martinez.
Aye.
Counsel Skinner.
Aye.
Counsel McGilbury.
Aye.
Counsel Madison.
Aye.
All right, passes five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are getting.
And then I'll give the signal, so what's her name?
The next one is the resolution regarding city and county insurance services.
Okay, the, the mayor had a question, an email question about, this only relates to CIS. Like you had asked something about like AFLAC. That is actually, AFLAC is just AFLAC. I mean, if you want to say, we don't, the city doesn't pay for AFLAC, we just offer it. So if you want to include that, that's fine, but it's not related to CIS.
So it would not be in this resolution?
No.
We have to do another resolution for that?
Um, you can include it in here if you want. You know, you could say, you know, in the, the resolution, you could say, do another whereas. I mean, I don't know. But this is specific. CIS requires us to adopt a resolution if we are going to offer the ability to purchase medical insurance through them. We have to adopt a resolution authorizing that. And then if any of the elected officials wanted to do that, it would be the city. The city has to be the one that pays CIS, but the, the elected official would pay the city just like the employees would pay.
Any questions, comments? I don't think we need to go around. Is there a motion?
You know what? I didn't do a sample motion. I'm sorry.
I think they can do this one.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. I make the motion to adopt.
Sorry. That's the resolution number?
Yes, I believe it's written right here. Make the motion to adopt Resolution R 223-05, a resolution authorizing elected official medical and dental coverage through city-county insurance, CIS.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion was made by Counsel Martinez, seconded by Counsel Bradley. Any discussion? Question. Counsel Bradley.
Aye.
Counsel Martinez.
Aye.
Counsel Skinner.
Aye.
Counsel McGilvery.
Aye.
Counsel Madison.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay.
Okay, and I did not have time to get the financial stuff done. I'm sorry. I will have.
We did have the minutes though, right?
I did do the minutes for the November 7th meeting.
So the consent calendar would be a motion to accept the minutes. I guess we should just do a motion to accept the minutes for November instead of consent calendar.
And technically they're action minutes.
So can I get a motion? And notice there's any changes to accept the action minutes for November 22?
I'll make a. What date did you say?
November 7.
Action minutes for November.
Seven, seven.
It doesn't have a date. Was it November 7?
Yes.
November 7.
I make a motion to accept the action minutes for the November 7, 2022 council meeting.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Call the question. Counsel Bradley.
Aye.
Counsel Martinez.
Aye.
Counsel Skinner.
Aye.
Counsel McGilvery.
Aye.
Counsel Madison.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Motion carries five to zero. No, you never have me sign those. Somebody's supposed to test those. Is that just the city recorder?
City recorder.
Great. Okay, I'm going to go back to number one, which is, or going to update on the most transient listening session, which went well. Surprised that didn't trigger greatly on that one.
I thought it was going to be fertilizer show. It wasn't. I really, I, I'm not a betting person and I, I would have bet a lot of money on fertilizer. It actually went much better than I expected.
I don't expect anybody to, to move anything based on that listening session at this point. It's a lot of information to digest. But is there anything that somebody wants to talk about tonight?
I had a question come up at my table, so I do.
Counsel Skinner.
In the management look-alike question, no designated area, no management, designated area, passive management, designated area, some security, I think is what it says there. And then the designated area managed by a nonprofit or church. There was questions about what the city's insurance would say about a designated area with passive management. So if the city said you can be here and there was a dumpster and there was a porta potty or some kind of toilet, what our insurance company would say about that? So I would think that would be something to get a solid answer on as we consider ideas.
Got one question?
Yes, because the, everything that we've gotten from CIS so far has been, if the city does a, like a village kind of thing, it, it can't be managed by the city. I am thinking, and, and I will ask to verify for sure, but I'm thinking that passive with just dumpsters and hygiene. And Chief White and I actually talked about a location the other day. We went out and looked at it.
Like a carve-out?
Yeah, the carve-out, yes. That. I would hope we would be covered by some virtue of recreational immunity. Just like if somebody is out on the street and they get accosted, that's not our problem that they're out in the right of way and got accosted. We wouldn't, I mean, certainly people can try and people do try to sue us. But, but I want to verify that with CIS, to just say, if we do like what the attorney says and to do this carve-out with no, no city management, what, what kind of liability? I have a feeling that there's probably going to be, if there isn't already, there will be soon, some kind of rider.
Got it. That came up in response to the idea of state-created danger, that of telling people go a certain place.
Yep.
And then it came up again, I saw at other people's tables, I think someone mentioned a go portal.
Yeah.
But that makes sense with that, having somebody who was maybe safely secured somewhere else having to move to a place that maybe was not the city.
Okay, yep. That's a good question.
Anybody else have any comments or questions at this time?
I'll just share something, the information that I learned from a resident that was there at, at my table. This, this particular person that worked as a bus driver for a short amount of time within the last few years, I can't remember what time period. And he just pointed out to me, I guess it wasn't the first time it's been pointed out, but there is, in his experience, there's a substantial amount of children who are living on the fringes of society, who are technically homeless, that attend our schools and. And they're just. I don't see how anyone could hear that and now want to do something. I mean, and I don't know what to do. But that's what I learned at that listening session, which I will reiterate went super well. It really seemed like everyone there was earnestly there to share their opinion respectfully and, and hopefully find a solution to the problems that we see. I just felt like sharing that. Thank you.
Okay, so Counsel McGilvery?
I think that at the table I was at, one of the things that came up was that while we're looking for some kind of medium to long-term solution, some kind of shelter for people, what we're missing is, right here, right now, we need our warming shelters back. We need, we need emergency shelters and warming places. And we've lost what we had. And so I'm, I'm just bringing that up because it's one of those things that came out. We didn't have the consensus at our table, was we well enough alone? You know, don't do anything. And I thought, yeah, but you know, all we can see are the people on the street that we see every day. They're not seeing those hidden homeless, like the young woman who's living in her car in a parking lot that I know of, and I saw her cleaning her car one day, trying, but I know she lives there. And kids that are kept surfing or living in their car with their parents or whatever. Those are the ones that, I was there, Jill, we got to do something. There's got to be affordable housing for them. There's got to be something. Because some of them are definitely working and they're working in jobs that don't pay enough to pay $2,000 a month rent. A motel man ain't going to make it on that. And yet we have a tourism, I'm on my mailbox, we have a tourism-driven economic society here and that's driven on services and those services are not always high-paying. Waitstaff, motels are not high-paying jobs, but they are necessary to our tourism industry. We need to house them.
Okay. Counsel Madison, if you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
Was that enough?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Sorry. Counsel Bradley?
Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
I did actually want to follow up because I had that question as well about warming shelters. I have people asking me questions that I don't know the answers to and I don't know where to find the answers about, do we have warming shelters?
I know that we have.
Counsel McGilvery had, had mentioned that previously. There weren't any legal warming shelters that I'm aware of. We, we had one, one person that asked on behalf of the church and then we discovered that they actually hadn't even spoken to the church about it because when the church found out, this was going to be for the Catholic church up off of Gauntlet. Gauntlet, yeah. They were kind of like, yeah, no, nobody's actually talked to us about this. But somebody had approached the city on their behalf, unbeknownst to them. And then the Seventh Day Adventists, they did have one of their parish members that, and you, you remember her, that, again, I think it was like a member of the church, but I don't know that it was actually sanctioned by the church. But, but there haven't been any legal, and when I say legal, I mean like authorized warming places. There may.
And is it the city that authorizes them? No.
Well, it would be planning-wise, because there was, there was a discussion that we got into, this was pre-COVID, with a couple of different churches about what, what constitutes, and I'm probably giving you more information than you want. But I had to do a bunch of research about what constitutes an accessory use to a place of worship. And, and we can't really call them churches anymore because not everyone is, is a church. I mean, there's synagogues, there's mosques, there's, there's a lot of different places. But, so places of worship. They have a whole lot more latitude to do stuff because that's considered part of their.
Mission.
Outreach.
Part of their mission, you know, like is, is to help the poor and needy. So they actually have a lot easier way to do it than, say, a nonprofit.
So if somebody wanted to do that, possibly, possibilities could include a place of worship, coming in the city and asking for an accessory use?
Yes, and it would be, it would be that. It would be, and I actually sent a letter out. In fact, I will.
Just suggest that. Why don't you send that letter back to the churches again and copy the council?
Yeah, it was, it basically laid out, we, we went through the attorney, like the, the path to if you wanted to do something like this. And the, when I talked to the attorney initially, he was saying that he would rather it be a permit through the council, where they would actually come to the council and ask for permission to use their church in the following way. And then that way, the council is able to put some guardrails on it, like, you know, number of people that can be there. The car camping came up, not camping, car.
Sleeping.
Car sleeping, lying, sitting, resting. So that, that was a thing, and that was also a big thing during COVID because the, I can't remember who touched on it, about the congregate living. Was it Ariel that had said that? I can't remember, but that during COVID, the congregate living was not like a real doable thing. And so being able to be in vehicles away from persons was more acceptable. So anyway, so I will get the letter that I had sent out. I want to say it was at the beginning of 2020 before COVID hit. Gives a little more information. And I realize that you're leaving, but I'm still going to send it to you because it's useful information for you as a community member, okay?
And on page 20, I don't know that it would work in the above letter, but one of the people at my table, oh, about halfway, a little more. It says, family promised in Lewiston, Idaho, late 90s, early 2000s. It sounded like this program was to prevent, I don't want to say a burden of helping people, but to lighten the effects of helping people, the churches would rotate the warming shelter amongst them. So like a church would do it for two weeks and then another. and then another church would do it for two weeks and then another church would do it for two weeks. I just thought, in what you were talking about, the place of worship thing, that caught my attention because I don't know about helping the homeless. But I do remember the boys' dorms in college and there's certain things that cause more wear and tear on buildings. So helping people in a building that's not necessarily designed to harbor a place to sleep, that rotation thing might be something churches or places of worship in our community might consider.
The, when I heard back from the Catholic Church, their concern was just what you had addressed earlier, is that their insurance didn't cover. And they have kind of the same, the aversion of the state-created danger thing, like, you know, because they would have to have separate areas for men and women. Kids wouldn't necessarily be able to be with... It just, there would have to be separation. And so they just felt like, for as small as their church was, that they couldn't assume the liability. And they acknowledged that, you know, while they felt it was their Christian duty to do something, they didn't feel like liability-wise, they were able to do it. So there's kind of that give and take also, that they feel compelled to help, but they also don't want to be held liable if something bad happens.
Okay. One thing I wanted to say is that there were quite a few people on one side of the spectrum and the other side of the spectrum. But if we do nothing, then we're not supporting our law enforcement team who are being abused on a regular basis. And I can't not do that. I have to do something to support our law enforcement professionals because their number-one job should not be moving people from place to place and dealing with a population that's supposed to have social service agencies to work with that. So whatever that looks out like, whether it's a carve-out or some other kind of solution, I think we need to continue to talk about it if nothing more than to support the people that we employ. And to that effort. I was moved by a lot of what the chief said and I don't think it's appropriate that people can say whatever they want to you, including threatening to rape your wife, and continuously do that. I don't know how you can go to work every day and hear that. It's not fair, it's not right, and we need to have other tools available. And so hopefully we can find those tools along the way. Yes, ma'am?
I'm very concerned about the idea of what you mentioned. And I'm sure Chris, it could very easily be versus the city of Gold Beach. Like, people, right now, we do nothing. I just feel like that we are opening ourselves up as a target for somebody to try to get somebody to do something wrong and then sue us. See? Because that's what's been happening. So that's my...
I think this issue...
That's my kind of fiscal slash political concern, is I don't want to see a lawsuit around this issue. And I feel that doing nothing might be, might make that more likely.
So let's think about that and we're not going to move that along tonight. And let's move on to the one-pager, which is related, but not totally.
Okay, that is on, it's further in the packet?
And last month, we agreed on the public bathroom. And Mr. Pagano, I can't remember your title at the moment.
Deputy CA.
Deputy CA Pagano. That's a lot of words. Did a lot of research on the type of facility that we need and we can include that in the one-pager. One of the things that I wanted to mention is that I included the Redmond and the Beaverton samples because the Redmond sample is the rough. And then the consultant for, I believe, Oregon Cities makes it pretty to present to legislature. So we don't have to make it pretty. We just have to make sure the words are not something the council can't live with. And based on the Oregon Mayors Association recommendation, we'd be looking at, I think it was $95,000. And then our ask for the restroom, I put $200,000 in there because in his research, the highest one, I think it was $170,000.
About a little over $160,000.
So I went a little high on that in hopes that we could get enough to do more. So does somebody want to start or should I start with Counselor Bradley?
I'll start on bathrooms.
Oh, yeah, you went and looked at them. Counselor Skinner?
I did. As part of our holiday, our Thanksgiving shopping, we stopped at the transit center in Medford and surveyed multiple family members, checked it out. Not my brother-in-law, he was not game. But the one we saw, I think, was the one that was like $160,000. So my bathroom question is, could we put $320,000 or do we have to put $200,000? Because we were talking before the meeting about having two, a facility at the park and a facility somewhere else. We have two non-destructible public bathrooms. So I don't know if you want to ask ELOC if we can do, put that number down. They might want to give a pass, but they might.
I say shoot for the moon.
Because we were talking about having one maybe somewhere on the highway park.
So as we grow, if people want more, tell me more and then we'll make that part of the...
Is there a change out on top?
And Counsel... Mr. Pagano?
Hey, you.
Do you want to go over what you, what your research briefly? Because you found several different options.
So there's three different options we can do. One would be the Portland Lou. There's another one, that's Romtech. They're out of Roseburg, I believe is where they were. They actually have a two-bathroom unit, which would be one unit, but two, one actual thing, but two units on it. And then the other would actually be like what we have at the park, but have put in where it's somewhere else, but it would just be indestructible inside, so all stainless steel or aluminum. So they couldn't destroy it.
Wouldn't that be remodeling the one we have at the park or...?
No, that would be building a new facility somewhere else. I'd like to see us get the one at the park and remodel it because it's all concrete block, there's no reason to get rid of it and just replace everything inside.
With the stainless steel?
Yep.
The one thing I liked about the Medford one is it had potable water on the outside. There was like a faucet where you could get water on the outside for maybe some hygiene or maybe giving your dogs some water or filling the water bottle. I thought that was a good feature to have access to.
There's this new, give it a week or two, that won't be there.
No, it's just, there's nothing...
No, I mean, it'd get broken.
Did I not send you, it's not, there's nothing...
Nothing to break off?
Nothing to break off.
Okay.
Nothing to break off.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there's a spigot, forget it.
No, no spigot.
It'll be there.
Nothing to break off.
Okay.
And then... I'll let other people share their edits, ideas, but I'll take, I'll take care of what's...
Let's go back in order, Counselor Bradley.
Counselor Martinez.
Counselor Martinez. He's the silent type.
Well, I'm happy to hear that there's ideas on possibly refurbishing and making usable again the bathrooms at the park. We have a lovely park. I think it's important that we have facilities there for everyone to use.
One thing I didn't mention, which I assumed you guys read, was that I had added, because we agreed on the bathroom, I'd added what else we would do with the $95,000 that I'd put to prevent homelessness from short-term income loss by partnering with local community action agency and possibly a community resource officer or partner with nonprofit to provide alternatives to first contact being our police officers. Pretty sure most of us agree with the first one, not sure about the second one. And it's my understanding, this is a sales pitch. It's not necessarily what we're contracted to have to do. But it's just to share our story with the legislature, along with the other 241 cities, that if you give us money, we will be a partner. And part of the ask is that we will work with you. Please don't give us any more unfunded mandates. And so that's what the lobbyists are telling me, is that if we don't do something, then we're probably going to get more unfunded mandates. So not everybody agrees with that, so with that.
Well, that's interesting, yes. Thanks for pointing that out. As I understand that, this may take a little pressure off our police officers, giving them one less thing to respond to, if I'm not understanding this correctly, the community resource officer. And just maybe, I don't know, maybe it takes a potentially a high-pressure situation and possibly, I don't know, possibly reduces the pressure when there's simply a person there without the power or authority to make an arrest. I don't know how the person on there receiving into that possible arrest sees when they see a community resource officer, but hopefully it is something that may reduce the potential for destruction or violence. So I'm happy to see that.
Counselor Skinner?
I'll start there. I was happy to see that too, the idea of having the police officers be able to do the jobs that they signed up to do and have maybe a nonprofit, a social worker or mental health first-day response kind of person being on scene. I like the idea of telling the state, we have solutions. We have ideas, like, give us the money, let us try it. You have, the legislators have these laws. So I like this idea that the ELOC came up with, asking the cities to show the state legislature what we can do as individuals. And how each three of these that you have, ours, Redmond and Beaverton, they're all different, but there are always to address it. And I think that's going to have to be the case. I think that if we do something from Salyman, and say, this is how you're going to address it, I don't see how it's going to work. I had some edits, you said edits, and ideas.
Okay.
So I don't think putting the Otter one on here would be good regarding the nature. Considering the nature of the letter, the little Otter logo. You would said that, maybe the, where we make a fancy, including that on the letter on page 231.
Right.
And then...
Like they put the city of Beaverton's logo on there.
Then we just, we'll just use the regular city logo.
The official logo, yeah.
So we can just do official logo?
Yeah, that's what I thought for the nature.
And I'll, it's been updated. I don't know that you have the most current version, so I'll send you the new one.
I know.
Okay.
And then on the rent, it's assumed, but to put it out, the first kind of full paragraph, rental units are at zero vacancy and when a unit does come available, the range of monthly rent.
Can you do this written out somewhere?
Yep. You want me to just give it to you later?
No, you can give it to me now. It's just, I don't have the voted type right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, actually, yeah, you guys could do that, like...
But I want the council to be okay with the gist of it.
So one other piece on the main layout of it, guys, is the points. And I'm on the Rom City. Where's our city? There we go. Our work. In the our work section, which I love that you put the half-stuff in there, the second part of that chunk comes with addressing homelessness as a difficult step, given we have almost no McDonald's. I think that has to be a separate section. And I don't know what we would title that. The challenges or the regional challenges or the specific challenges to our city. But I think that's separate than our work because I want our work to be like, hey, look, state legislature, look at what we've done, look what we're doing. And then say, hey, we need your help, we need your money allocated.
So we could include that in the pain points, but not with a vote necessarily?
So maybe that could just be challenges and then pain points could be like the, pain points could be like the acute challenges. So here are our challenges and here are the acute things. These are the things really causing issues. So maybe two sections, our work, our challenges, and then our acute challenges or, I don't know about pain points, but something like that. And then I want to pull on people's emotions and use Gold Beach often in this with the hope that there are people sitting in the state legislature who've heard from David Brock Smith about how awesome Perry County is or who went on Jeff Oak's American and they're hearing our town and it's invoking that emotional response. So I think the more times you can put Gold Beach in this letter, that might give us some emotional leverage. That may or may not sound nice, but...
Okay.
It might, it might work. And I think overall, I think it's good. I like how you came up with the social thing. I think we talked about that in the last meeting. We did talk about that in the last meeting, the idea of a resource officer and that preventing homelessness case. And I've heard that. I've heard that we've had nonprofits in our community keep people in their houses by funding that gap between what they were paying and what the rent was. So thank you, thank you for preparing us.
Counselor McGilroy?
No, I don't have anything right now.
Are you okay with the social ask?
I am. I'm just, the capital request. Mr. Pagano, you were talking about revamping the current facility at the park. Did you have a number on that, what the cost might be?
No.
Because I want to make sure that we ask for enough...
So you're thinking three-ish?
Yeah. And five hundred? Yeah, and then make sure we're asking enough to revamp bathrooms. And we've got two, actually, public bathrooms. Although one belongs to the board, one belongs to the city.
We have one at the South Beach Park?
Yeah.
And one, and two at the Buffington Park that are destroyed.
Right. And I was just wondering, maybe we could ask for money to revamp those in a way that we save the structure and the plumbing, but put in less destructible...
Prison bathrooms.
Yeah. Less destructible facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
So let's make sure we ask for enough.
Counselor Madison?
I don't have anything until you have...
Can you live with the suggestions?
Yeah.
Do you want the $200,000 capital request at two or do you like the higher number?
Whatever the consensus is. This is just, this is nothing formal.
It's not formal, it's a sales pitch to the legislature.
That's why I think we should go higher. In order to get these indestructible bathrooms, yes, they're hideously expensive. Yeah, they're hideously expensive because they're indestructible.
We had the manager of Milliron up in North Bend, say, it was like $600,000.
$600,000?
And he was like, yeah, let's just $600,000. We were like, and he thought it was no big deal. He's giving us a heart attack. Okay. And are you okay with the higher capital request and the...
I'm okay with everything but editing.
Will Counselor Skinner do the editing?
If you did edit it, I'd approve you. Please do. I mean, he might just check out on that.
So I think we should have a motion so that there's a record that we approve.
Do we want to bring some number?
What's that?
Do we want to bring some number?
I think you need to say at least $350,000.
I said $350,000.
Yeah.
I was actually meaning $400,000, but... And is that number...
They're going to expect us to match some...
Is that number 95?
That was the calculation from the Mayor's Association based on population.
So what kind of motion were you looking for, Mayor?
Just an approval of the one-pager with Counselor Skinner's edits.
I'm forgetting. Hi, there. Patrick Council, exit of the one-pager with edits and with the increase of the capital request to the...
Is there a second?
One second.
You have an motion in a second on the floor? It's already been discussed, so I'm just going to go ahead and call the question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Is that nine?
Barely.
Barely, okay. Okay. So that passes by zero. And what is next?
Okay, so we still don't have Reverend Stapleton. So I guess what I'll do is I'll just, I did email him, but I will just mail him a copy of the packet to tell him that this is something that we are working on.
Yeah, and you've got the grant, Mr. Pagano, right? Or are we just on the... Or are we just on the second level?
We made it to the second level. We haven't got the grant yet.
So why don't you brag about that for a second?
This is a completely different one.
I know. So you applied, you've heard grant for the?
We got a, we applied for a grant code by cap, and we got approved to move on to the second round.
Okay.
And that's through ODOT, right? Okay.
And then do you want to go ahead while we're here and brag about the other one?
And then we applied for another grant to finish the sidewalk from, would be on Riley, is it Riley Creek way?
Leave.
Leave. From where they ended it previously, Riley Creek, to the bus shed. So we'll actually be able to extend it and replace all that along there with what they've done already. And we got that, we won, we got, received that notification just the other day that we were awarded that one, so.
And in the notification was a picture of our project.
Was it?
Yeah. There is, it's, the maximum grant was 250,000, which you received, and there was a picture of our project on the cover.
Oh, perfect.
So congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, get that.
We have our motions on executive session.
What's that?
We have our motions on executive session.
Oh, yes. Let's go ahead and read that before we get a number. So we had an executive session on two topics, and I think Counselor Skinner, are you making motions on those?
I'll have to do the one that you've already.
Um, I make the motion that the council authorize the staff and the mayor to move forward with what was discussed in executive session regarding dangerous building.
Is there a second?
Call second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Counsel Braden?
Aye.
Counsel Martinez?
Aye.
Counsel Skinner?
Aye.
Counsel McGilvery?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
And next?
And the next one is, I move to direct staff to have the attorney put together the exclusive option agreement for the real estate transaction discussed in the executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call a question. Counsel Braden?
Aye.
Counsel Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Skinner?
Aye.
Counsel McGilvery?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, who?
Motion was made by McGilvery, seconded by Braden. Sorry, I usually say.
No, I was, I wasn't following as fast as I should have.
Okay. Monthly updates on recurring topics.
Okay. Okay, so this, I just kind of called it, you know, because it's kind of the catch-all. I didn't want to like do something separate for each one. So the LOC elected essentials training, they do that every year after the elections. That is gonna, for our region, is gonna be in North Bend this Wednesday. Counselor Skinner and our incoming counselor have been signed up. If anyone else wants to go, please let me know. No cost to you, we give you a per diem and all that. It is early morning, though. It starts at 7:30. It's like, good God, I don't know what they're thinking. Usually meetings don't start till.
I'll drive the car pool and the other person will sleep. Oh, wait, no, I'm not. I couldn't possibly.
So if anyone else wants to go, just let us know by tomorrow so that we can get you signed up.
I'm signed up.
You were signed up for that and the OMA one, so.
Am I 7:30 to 8:00 in the evening?
Well, that's what it said, yeah.
They're mean.
Okay, and then, then Mr. Pagano updated you on the small city allotment grant, you know, woo-hoo, way to go. We had, this is continuing work that we had two previous small city grants on in 2020, 2021, although the work didn't get completed until last year because of COVID. But this is continuing on, so when that's all done, the whole area around Riley Creek will be much.
Safer.
Safer, yeah. But just that the road is better and so it's all, so yeah, so we were glad to get that. Okay, a quick update on the LGIP, that was the local government investment pool. By the time I did all the paperwork, going back and forth with them, we were able to transfer a million dollars of savings into there, and in five days, we made over $500 in interest, which our money market pays us $8 a month. So in five days. So it'll be interesting to see what a whole month brings us, how much money we'll make in interest. So that was definitely, that, that was the most amazing advice we've ever gotten from an auditor. So anyway, so by next year, that'll be good money. And that's it for that agenda item.
Okay. Did you want to answer these tasks?
Yep. Okay, so, so I just kind of went through, I had Mr. Pagano check on the building permit program. For October, we had one single-family dwelling, manufactured home, and one demo permit for the old beachcomber, which I have to say, that was kind of, that was the first job I ever had in my whole life, was, other than babysitting, was cleaning motels at the beachcomber. So it's kind of like a bummer to see it torn down. But it was time. November, we didn't, there weren't any permits that were issued. I met with the, our lead person, Jane, at the visitor center the other day. She gave me some, a list of accomplishments, and I know some of them seem like, you know, well, that seems like everyday work, but there was a lot of stuff, because the center had been closed for most of COVID, there was a lot of like cleanup and stuff that they needed to do, not really cleanup, but just, you know, when a building's been vacant for a while. So they did a lot of rearranging and fixing things. And then when we did the remodel for COVID, it also kind of, the remodel went very well, but it like obviously made things very dirty. So, so some of those tasks may seem like, like not really that big of a deal, but, but it was to them because they had to clean things up. As of beginning October, the Department of Revenue, we talked about this earlier, with the transient lodging tax, they remit quarterly rather than monthly like we do. And so we will not get a payment from them probably until January because the, the operators started reporting to them for the fourth quarter of 2022. So that'll be October, November, December, then they remit to the state, the state then will remit to us. It's just like how the marijuana tax is. So they, they'll remit to us. So hopefully we'll get something in January and maybe February. So it'll be interesting to see with them collecting it, what the numbers are gonna look like. Because I have some data where I can look back on that quarter and see how it compares. Police department, after making a very detailed case for the need, and I didn't want to include it in the packet, but, but I will share it with the council later, that I, I told Chief White, it's like, okay, I need you to like shoot me something so I can, I can justify this, and I was thinking like maybe a paragraph. And he, of course, as articulate as he is, he gives me this wonderful thing, and I'm like, God, I want to hire like five, you know, after I got done. So it, we're gonna have, because of the time that they have to spend babysitting unruly transient people, obviously, as I said before, that's a ticket that's not written, that's a crime that's not investigated. So Chief White said, look, we need somebody to work just traffic. And traffic is not about revenue. It is a sidebar, but that's not, working traffic is to enforce traffic laws. So, so do you want to just like get two, two quick things about Mr. Pagano?
Yeah, real quick, just each time I'm out with anyone in the public, traffic specifically, speed comes up in the top three things that concerns the community. And we had a golden opportunity with a deputy who, for personal reasons, wanted to go to a part-time schedule. He approached me, we worked, it worked out a proposal to do a trial traffic enforcement program, which would use money that's generated by traffic enforcement for traffic safety, which I'm all about. That seems like that's the equitable way to use those fines and fees. So with him, he's a very decorated, advanced certified in Oregon deputy who started the sheriff's office one week before I did, and then just transferred over. He's working 20 hours a week and is, had been averaging three stops an hour, having a very incredible experience with many of our locals, but working on an education as well as an enforcement strategy to gain hopefully cooperation, but at a minimum compliance. And it's been fabulous so far, at least researching grants to find ODOT money that's available for specific traffic enforcement projects, which we've previously not been able to promise we could do without a dedicated traffic safety program. So, so far in its first month, it's had tremendous benefits to the motoring public from the feedback I've gotten. I'm sure you'll get some, and so far, none of it's been bad.
So that was last month. I don't, if you recall, the mayor's like, did you want to talk about the new person? And I'm like, we're not talking about the new person. Because at that time, we didn't know yet that it, that he was coming over. So it was like, what new person? So that was, that was what that was about. So thank you, Chief White.
I didn't even know about the new person because I signed up to check.
Yeah, and I'm like, no, it's not.
The psyche valve, and somebody had to, but it wasn't officially yet.
Yeah, it was not.
And that's the other thing that Gold Beach Main Street, their town hall meeting is they found that traffic calming was really important, so.
Yep.
That ties right into what we're doing here.
So then, you know, without beating a dead horse, any better, obviously, my, my last day is gonna be at the end of February. We talked about this earlier, well, last month, we talked about it last month, about transition. Mr. Pagano, he was promoted to deputy city administrator. He's, I'm downloading as much as I can into, into him while I'm here. And I, I just, I just gotta throw my pitch out there again. I would hope that you will offer him the pro temp, and that's, I'm speaking to the mayor, you know, that could be effective March 1st. You know, you can do it at any time and say effective March 1st. And then if the mayor asked me to post the job, and we had talked about that at the 21st meeting, so the, the job is posted, it's on our website, it's on LOC. But I would hope that you could promote him into the pro temp position, and then if somebody better comes along, you can, you know, that can be undone, but you could make it effective March 1st. But that's just my pitch. I'm gonna throw it out there again. You guys all know how I feel, so I won't beat that horse any longer. Public Works, we're, I'm gonna beat this horse, yeah, we're still looking. Will thankfully is staying on by contract as the project manager for the waste, for the water project because he's been there since the beginning, and he graciously offered to do that, and I totally accepted that offer. Because the, you know, obviously, the engineers know him, the people, the crew, the RNG crew were actually kind of freaking out when they found out he was leaving, but then were kind of calmed down that he was gonna be there for the project. And then he will keep, we will keep him on retainer, so to speak, for his certifications for both the water and the wastewater plants until we get somebody in place that has the certifications. We are also down one public works person, so it's not just that we're down Will's position. We had one of our public works guys left August? Yeah, it was right after July. And we hadn't actually refilled that position because we were kind of waiting to see, but I think I need to start advertising just as another crew position, but as a certified operator. So likely, we'll, we'll be hiring two people. Mr. Pagano went out and looked at the certification roster on the state websites, and we sent out packages, we, meaning him, sent out, sent out packages last week directly to people that are certified in Oregon, and we're hoping that maybe if we do a direct appeal to them, that maybe we can get a bite from somebody. So far, we've only had one application. So it's just, it's just hard times. Plus, I think, too, that people don't really like to make decisions in December, you know, because it's the holidays and nobody wants to move then. So I'm hoping that maybe in January, with the new year, that people will be thinking more about new things. So anyway, and then, and then that's it, that's all here.
We have one application, one resume for the state administration. Are we gonna pile those all together like for the January meeting? Is that what you guys want? See what's, see what we get?
I just, that you refer to it as your piles, it's a policy.
So, okay, I guess that's, I guess that's the question to ask because typically, this is the only position I don't hire. So how do you want, how do you want to deal with that? Do you want me to give you applications as you receive them? Do you want me to wait and give them to you with the council packet? I don't think they should be included in the council packet. I think it should be separate. I mean, I.
Do you guys want as we go or just all at once?
I would think having them together is.
I think it's more fair for the applicants.
Okay, well, so far, we received one.
So maybe should we wait till?
Like I said, I don't see people changing jobs in December. I just don't, you know, with the holidays, it's just not something people, I could be wrong.
So you're thinking of, you might recommend looking at February.
Well, I would send it to you. I would send you the applications that we received along with the, the January packet.
Yeah, why don't we bring them in for January if we get any in?
And then you guys all did receive, did you forward Mr. Pagano's packet that he gave you? Okay, all right.
So, yeah, we'll just keep picking away at this until we figure it out.
So is it just posted till, posted till?
I didn't put a, I didn't put a.
Phil.
X, X ratio, yep.
So if we are looking at applicants in January and we're not seeing the fit we're looking for, we can just keep collecting applications Friday?
If I heard the council correctly, at the workshop, you wanted to see if there was any local talent as well as the bigger search and see what's available, if I heard you correctly. Okay. Nothing else from city staff, then we'll go to council updates, and we'll start with Counsel Madison.
Oh, let's see. Well, I'm anxious to see, I know that Counselor Skinner had mentioned a few months ago about liaison roles for counselors, and so I'll be looking forward to what that looks like in January. We've got a small business, micro enterprise, City VG grant coming for 100,000, so please be mindful of those small businesses that might be looking for some support. Let's see, AWE, working with SOE and Southwest Oregon Children's Foundation to build out some, some local interest in our youth onboarding some specific trades. And so what I'll be doing is hitting our districts and our municipalities up first because succession planning is just not something we continue to keep in the whole of our minds. And so I'm thinking I'm going to use that program to kind of do that in hopes that, you know, we may find a youth that is interested in, you know, I mean, I never thought my kid would be in plumbing, and my kid loves plumbing, loves it.
He will make money in that.
You know, he just, he, it's like Legos with pipes. So anyway, so that gives me hope.
You have a public works opening?
Yeah. Actually, our best hire has been a local kid. Sam has been amazing, and he just loves it, so yeah.
I'll let Kurt know.
Yeah.
On the job training.
Like I said, we grow on.
Yeah, you're right. That's, that's really what I'm looking to do, is grow around.
Yep.
So I had an impromptu meeting with a project manager, came barreling through the door today and said, I hear you've got these programs and these projects. And I'm like, yeah. And he just went on and on, and so I'm excited because he knew exactly what I was talking about with Gold Beach Main Street, a block-by-block initiative. And I just, we, it was one of those conversations, anyway, where you take 10 minutes and you've really just made the most of that 10 minutes, and it was exciting. So I'll circle back around with you because it'll involve the event center and Gulf Coast. And just the, the idea that somebody will be onboarding and potentially doing a lot of that heavy lifting that we don't have to do would be nice. So keep city administration in the loop on that, probably through Main Street. And then childcare updates, so thank you again, city staff, for getting that permit cleared. We got clearance through the county planning department or building, so I'm really happy about that because there's not a bunch of work that needs to be done before it gets going. And so that's 16 kids that will get, you know, opportunity for. And so, that's 16 kids that will get, you know, opportunity for childcare, and parents that will be able to work, albeit it's still probably going to be around $900 a month full-time. But, you know, Representative Smith bought us the funding for Central Curry to onboard preschool services, it's the easiest and the quickest way to do it through school districts, and so that will be, it's not even going to be low barrier, it'll be no barrier. So, we have that to look forward to. And lastly, I just want to say, Counsel McGilvery, what a pleasure it's been to serve with you, and I wish it would have been longer. And I very much appreciate the scope, the lens, and the insight that you provide that I most often didn't consider until you chatted in, and so the diversity of perspective that you bring to topics is very important, and I'm hoping that if something comes up and I don't find that I have somebody as seasoned as you on the council, I can give you a call and say, wow, what would you do? Because you, you see that we will have a younger council, and I don't know that that's representative of our, our population. So, I just delighted working with you, and meetings are fair, and, and I thank you for your coaching during the play, and that's all, but thank you so much for everything that you've done, and go on to your county, the city.
Thank you.
I can handle the liaison activities.
Okay. I thought you were going to be working with Commissioner Hesch on the consolidation?
They don't need us.
Okay.
I have been needed.
Okay. All right, Counsel Martinez?
Just know that, well, I work at the high school, and so I'll just share that, the boys and the, and the girls' basketball team has their first home game this Thursday evening, so maybe come down and support, support our youth sports teams. And then, not this, wait, yes, this Saturday, it's the 10th? Yes, I'll be judging the gingerbread house at the local library in the middle of the day, so that'll be a nice attraction for people to want to see some lovely artwork be done with the gingerbread houses.
Did you get the short straw instead of the, no, that's the good straw.
That was, that's the edible sweet straw. So, that's it, just a couple of community things going on in the community, just thought I'd share that. And thank you, Valerie, thank you, thank you for being here, and speaking your mind, representing our town so well, thank you.
Counselor Skinner?
I wanted to start off with big thing, the community engagement, man, people stepped up at those two sessions we had last week, talking about homelessness and a really tough issue. And then, for my own business, I had an event this Saturday, and I just started making like a list, like my sister-in-law moved to town on Thursday, and I'm like, yeah, this is what every Saturday was like in Gold Beach. We had like eight things going on in Gold Beach for the people who live here on Saturday. It was amazing, so I love that the community came together on like hard issues, and came together to celebrate and do holiday stuff, that was pretty amazing. And the great news at the end of the packet, like ODOT grants, traffic officer, the visitor center, list of celebrations, and the local government investment group, like it's nice when things go right, you know? I wanted to share, oh, I wanted to share that there's a city funds, because we, the city of Gold Beach invests in their leaders, the save the date for the city day at the Capitol is January 25th, and I extended the city's investment, because I took 20 minutes to do an application, so I have a scholarship, so that means the city has, the city has more money to spend another staff slash counselor person to this, so I would love to have someone join me. The conference in Bend was great, and I guess I should say, since her parents are in the room, there was a young lawyer presenting at the conference in Philly, where you see the conference in Bend on the First Amendment, and she did an outstanding, that was Gold Beach High School alum, Hannah Lawson. And then, the last thing, Gold Beach High School, Gold Beach School District, I did start after the LOC conference, and then flipping the youth outreach model, and where we're not able to have a, well, we are not yet at the point, I should say, we're not yet at the point of having a large youth council, we have our new, what's his name? Our student liaison?
Oh, our student liaison, Morgan.
Morgan, not Morgan, sorry. We have Morgan, but I talked with another small town, or former mayor from a small town in Aurora, Oregon, and he did that flip model where he went in each month to the schools. So, I started that in October, and then just, just in November, I went and visited with the two third-class classrooms, and we talked about what the city does, just really briefly, and then we, then we talked about parks, and then the kids brainstormed what they liked about the parks, and just practicing, interaction and conversation. Our next scheduled visit is the 14th of December in the morning. Anybody who would like to join, myself, Merrick Hoffman, feel free, and I would love to have other council members and city staff join us in the future. So, the goal is to go in once a month and connect with the kids about city, build your own, right? So, then they're like, oh, this is what the city does? So, that's my update, and Val, thank you, thanks for sitting next to me and coaching me, and thank you, you know, hashtag civic engagement, thank you for putting your name on the ballot and running again. And she's expecting a phone call, I would love to see you out here at the podium sharing your two cents on the record when there's issues that concern you.
You never know.
Thank you.
So, for me, I can only say thank you to all of you, and what an honor and a privilege and a pleasure it has been being here and getting to know all of you, and coming to develop a great deal of admiration and respect for this council and for all of you and the diverse perspectives each one of you bring to this table. It's been quite an education, and quite a wonderful experience. That's it, thank you all.
Thank you. I wanted to add, for the city day, if you guys decide you want to go, they do as much as they can to have you meet the Senate President and the Speaker of the House, which we do this year for both positions, and they try to get the governor to come. And there's not a lot of opportunities in your life that you'll be able to meet that many people, that you can actually contact them and get something done. So, those are good connections to make, because down the road, you might need to call on those people and say, hey, we need this, and so it is a good opportunity to network and get that opportunity to, to do that. I had, I used to walk from my house on Melody Lane down to Val's house on Melody Lane, and when I first started, it was just a tiny bit, and then I got to where I was doing it all day and all night, working into a pretty good thing, and one day
She means all night, a flashlight, she can't go.
I had a step pole, and so it worked really well, and I missed that, I've sold my house since then, and one of the days I was walking, I had mentioned that I, since I got elected mayor, I needed to fill my position, and that was a really hard decision, and, and she says, well, you know, I've been thinking about that.
I can put it out.
And she put her application in, and her application was really, really good. I have so much about you I didn't know, and you lived, what, 500 feet from me all those years? And I, I obviously made the right decision, you have been an incredible asset to our city council, and I really appreciate that, and I would like you to consider getting on the planning commission, the budget committee, either both or, either or.
Both or either or. You don't want me on budget committee, I'm dyslexic with numbers, they mean nothing.
But you were good at it, you asked a lot of good questions at the last one, and, and I like that, I like the questions, and, and as Counsel Madison said, you, you give us that perspective from the person that's on a fixed income, that's of an age group that's our median, our majority of our population. I'm getting close to the median age, but I'm not quite there yet, and
You're saying this is a town of bogies?
It's just the way it is.
We are.
So, and I did want to give you a gift. It's, it's a key to the city.
Oh.
And there's a big one and a baby one.
Oh.
So, thank you. As Administrator Fritz would say, that was a big seat to fill. Yeah, it's quite healthy as a counselor. Oh, don't cry. Change is inevitable, right?
Yes, you will be missed, Valerie, very much.
Yes, we do have openings for you. And with that, I'm going to keep it short, I would like Counsel Martinez to sign these and Counsel Skinner, these are the thank you cards for the homeless listening session. If there's any, is there anything else that needs to be discussed?
I don't think so.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go on. Okay, next year, let's try to have shorter meetings.